I call the order to regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on January 25th at 2:00. Always a start of an invocation, I'd like to say, Chairman Ms. Cox, if you please.
Yes, stand please. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we'd like to thank you for this day. We'd like to thank you for all of your many blessings. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here today to do the business for the county. We ask for your wisdom as we make these decisions. Also like to take a moment to ask your blessings and to ask your healing hand to touch many families in our community that are hurting right now, that have sick children and loved ones, that are touched by COVID and many other illnesses, Lord. We just asked you that you would wrap your arms around those families and hold them tight. And it's in your name I ask these things, amen.
Please continue standing for our pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all the approval of the agenda?
Commissioner, go first.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Move on to our comments from our county commissioners and county manager. I was talking about Commissioner Minnowell.
Thank you, and thank everyone for being here today. It's good to see y'all. And I want to say to everyone that is watching us on live stream, welcome to the meeting. We are, we have all of our thoughts and prayers with everyone that is dealing with this COVID-19 virus still. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we complete our vaccinations, hopefully sooner than later, that things will be starting to get back to normal. And just thank you again for being here with us, and that's all I have, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome everybody as well, especially those online, if we have a few out there on this oddly scheduled meeting in the afternoon, but there might be one or two. Also, prayers are with those that are doing the COVID thing and trying to get through them. Glad to see Shannon's back after about, we'll keep working to try to get things back to normal in 2021. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Boniekus?
Yeah, I already, Mr. Morris said welcome everybody this year, everybody that's watching, and I'd just like to send a special thanks out to all of our healthcare workers and EMS and fire law enforcement, and all the volunteers over at West Oaks High School. I got nothing but great compliments out of that, and there were several people come through, I don't know the total number, but it was great to see all those commissioners there in support of this as well. We're here to serve citizens, help them any way we can.
Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what they were saying, the other commissioners were saying. Just a huge shout out and thanks to our health department, our EMS, the Fire Marshal's Office, the volunteers that we had there Saturday at the mass vaccination site. We all spent about an hour or more there with them observing, and I was just amazed at the precision that it took to pull off something of that magnitude, and how organized and efficient it was, and I heard nothing but good things and good feedback about that. And hopefully, there'll be more coming up, more mass vaccination sites for other groups and the 65 and older. I just ask that people be patient with the process, and I know we've all had calls about getting on that list and trying to get their vaccinations as quickly as possible, and I can tell you that department is working as hard as they can to call everybody back and get them scheduled, and it's just a lot, I think the final number between Life Bright and was 997, I don't know why they couldn't find three more people, but 997 was the total between both, 807 at West, yeah. So, and just for all y'all that are watching out there, or may watch this later, just lots of thoughts and prayers going out for community members that we know are struggling with COVID still, and their families are, and other issues, just a lot of heavy hearts in our community today. That's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. I mean, it sounds like a broken record, but just as the other commissioners also said, big shout out to all our department and Fire Marshal and EMS, and we just kind of showed up and observed some, and really had them force it, they had it all ready to go, and it worked perfect. It's no flaws in it, and I believe they also got no one scheduled with South Stokeses there, is that correct, Mr. Oakley?
That probably will be hard to pull that off, vaccines in the state, so once that gets here, we start scheduling the appointment. So, I don't see how they'd be able to do it.
Have enough doses.
But I don't see how they would be able to pull that off and get everything scheduled like they did for West Oaks.
Okay.
They're looking at those sites also, and that's common with people, I hope so, but we'll see.
All right, well, maybe we can get those vaccines in and get this right here going, like Commissioner Minnowell said, get some diplomacy back, it'd be nice to see that. But without, moving on to our county manager, Mr. Oakley?
Well, I reiterate what your commissioners said concerning our healthcare workers, they're wonderful and they're great, and they've given a lot of their time and a lot of their effort. They're getting tired.
Yeah.
So, pray for their strength and their durability, and everyone in Stokes County just will know that I am praying for everyone, because this, I'm glad to have my Shannon back, that's good that she's here, and it didn't do any worse than what it had done to her, but it affected her tremendously, and it's opened my eyes a little bit, so folks, just be careful and be wise on what you're doing.
Thank you so much. We have no public comments, I'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Ask Commissioner Morris for approval.
Commissioner, go first.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Move on to our information agenda, but first, we have our COVID-19 vaccine update, Mr. Oakley?
There we go. I've got a report that we kind of put together from Tammy, I'm gonna pull this off for a second, so you can get it. And it kind of goes over the highlights of what happened Saturday, and what we've got in plan, and how we're gonna work this.
Thank you.
You know how many vaccines we have received, just letting you know how, who all's involved in it, as far as the health department, DSS, Plump DSS, and Life Bright, EMS, and then it talks about that there's a two vaccine dosage, and how many days in between each other. Does it know the vaccination sites that they are taking into consideration? It lets you know the mass vaccination sites that we are planning on doing, and hopefully it will work out. If it don't, we will do whatever needs to be done to make sure that the people are accommodating, and the flow of traffic works really well. It worked wonderfully keen, because of their layout, and I'm sure that they will have some more, but we're hoping to maybe work something out in other places also. And then it also talks about availability and public awareness, and we hope that this meeting gets out people looking at it, the word of mouth gets out, calls go out, newspaper, I'm hoping they will write it up and do a little article on it here, and let's just let people know how it's working, okay? And I'm hoping that the governor steps up and gets this vaccine out to these counties that need it, because you seen this morning, Rockingham County already done canceling, like that they had scheduled.
Go for it, call and help.
Yeah, so we hope that don't happen here, and we hope that they are able to make sure that this vaccine is out to all the counties. And then you see the availability and your state assistance. Right now, state assistance, I don't like to say that, but that's what we're getting. And they planned, they said they were gonna give us workers with contact tracers, investigators of the actual virus, it was working to come in and help them do actual tracing and actual logging down of the actual vaccine to get people in.
She's been waiting.
We still wait? So, I probably will, could sit here, maybe just pause, say we still waiting, but just Stokes County people, and I'll do everything I can, Shannon will do what she can, and I know you guys will, love Stokes County, and we will do everything we can to make sure people get vaccinated and taken care of.
I saw where they canceled that massive amount of people at Greensboro Coliseum as well, County State.
Call and help.
Thousands of people lined up when they couldn't get the vaccine.
I did speak with Kyle Hall this week about it, seeing if he could be of any assistance to us in getting it, and, you know, he just said that from the state level, the rollout of it has been just poor, how they've not been very organized, and it's just, they, I don't know if they just weren't prepared or didn't prepare well enough to get it out to everybody, but I know he's trying to help us all he can, but his hands are pretty tied with getting any additional vaccines. But this is just my viewpoint, I would personally like to see the school employees moved up the line a little bit in this and get them in as soon as possible. I know she's got, it's based on her amount that Tammy has available, where she could fit them in, but it's about 350 employees that want it, and with them coming in contact with over 5,000 students, they need it, and we want to keep schools open and open them up fully as soon as possible, so, you know, the sooner we can get the school employees in, the better. So, I just want to go on record as saying, I would love to see them moved up the line a little bit. I know Davie County went rogue and did it, so, you know, it's important, I think. Yesterday, I see they're after the 65 group.
Any more questions, Colonel?
Our governor doesn't, didn't learn anything from Trump about how to do vaccines, unfortunately.
Actually, wasn't Carolina ranked, was it 48 in the nation right now for vaccines getting done?
The bottom 10 at least.
Yeah. All right, without, we'll go ahead and move on.
Thank you for the report.
Go ahead and move on to item B, register deeds quarterly update, Mr. Brennan Hook.
Good afternoon. Is this on, Shannon? I'm gonna take this off so I can speak. Thank you for having me today. Since this is my first time before the new board, I want to welcome the two new board members, look forward to working with you, if you need me for anything, give me a call anytime. This report's a lot like the one from October, just higher numbers, good numbers, not higher bad numbers. You look at your report and see our revenue and transactions, total revenue for the quarter was $170,078.50, and you can see how many deeds we record, deeds to trust, and these other documents, and that's from the same period last year. Our number of transactions was a 16.09 increase from the second quarter of last fiscal year, and the big number, revenue, was at 46% and .42 over the last year, same quarter. I'll get to that number in just a little bit. The conveyance tax, which is half the excise tax we collect, went to the state, Domestic Violence Center, and Children's Trust Fund, both of those come out of our marriage license fees. State treasurer, 830-8860, for total, money is collected by the state at 61,767.35. So, our gross minus our money is sent to the state for net revenue of 108,315 for the quarter, and that's the biggest, that's the most we've done in a quarter since I've been So, the 46%, that's a big number in a year's time, and that's excise tax, and I've said at the last several reports I've made, excise tax continues to go up, not the tax itself, but the amount that the taxpayers are bringing in. And for a brief explanation for the new board members, excise tax, if you're not familiar with it, is a tax on the transaction of transferring property from one, real property from one owner to another, and it's calculated at $1 for every $500 purchase price. For a $100,000 property would carry a $200 excise tax. The county retains half of all excise taxes collected, we remit the other half to the state, North Carolina, and the county also retains 2% of the excise tax for compensation for collecting and remitting the tax. And the calculation and the distribution arrangements all spelled out in General Statute 105-22830, and that's been in place for 30 years. As I said in my last report, the housing market is just roaring, it's very strong, and just as interest rates were starting to get back up from the recession, they, you know, COVID drove them back down, and that's just increased demand for getting new 30-year mortgages, and with the housing shortage, it's caused houses, the home prices to go way up, and people getting bidding wars, and the houses are selling for more than list price, and that's where we're getting these big excise taxes. When I got my real estate license, you couldn't get it to sell for tax value, and I have it selling for above list price. And I said I'll have to say this, our excise tax collection has gone up 66% in a year. That's just amazing to me. I gave you that table, everyone got a table, I didn't get it to Shannon in time to get in your report, but that is total real estate value sales from January to December of the last five years. Let me look at my copy so I can see it along with you. Now, you see 2020, 158,540,250 dollars in a year's time, that's what the excise tax collections is based off of, that's, I mean, that's, the excise tax collection, dollar per 500, and so I just times our total excise tax collection by $500, and that's our value, and that's total of all real estate sales in the county in 2020. It jumped up almost $30 million over the previous year, and you see the previous four years before that didn't go up $30 million over four years, so 2020's been really, really busy for our office and for the real estate market altogether. Revenue projections for this fiscal year were for $170,000 in register deeds fees, $100,000 for excise tax collections, and $2,000 for the conveyance fees, total projection of 272. And as of 12/31, we were 50% of the budget, and we'd collected 75.54% of our projected revenue. So, we're doing, we're doing very, very well. I don't know how long it's gonna keep up, this all depends on the market, but I don't expect interest rates to go back down until after COVID, and that's gonna be a while, in my opinion. I heard somebody say it's gonna be two years before they increase rates, but I don't know about that, but revenue was way up, and it's, it's this market, it's the interest rates low and a housing shortage. It's good news for us, but it's, you know, I hate it despite COVID going on, that's what it took to get us to this kind of market, but the number of transactions we processed went across, went up across the board too. We saw an increase in the recordings of almost every document related to the transfer of property, deeds, deeds to trust, satisfactions of those deeds to trusts, and plaits all went up. We saw an increase in the number of marriage license, that went up, we did almost 50 more than we did in 2019 in 2020, and like I said, I think that's just people wanting to get married in a year that ends with a zero, so they can figure out how many years they've been married. Our operations was, you know, affected by COVID somewhat, but they've remained largely unencumbered. When the government center closed on the 4th, I ordered three mobile units for the staff to work from home if the need arose. Our part-time position employee, she did often take advantage of that, and she's getting work done from home without having to answer the phone at the office, and she may have distractions at home, but she's getting a lot of work done, and what she's doing is indexing our old birth certificates from 1940 to 1913, which is as far back as they go, they were not scanned until we scanned them a year ago, and you can't find them in the system unless you index them. You have to know the book and page it's recorded in, if you want to pull it up, so her indexing, we can search it like that on the database, otherwise, we have to go to pull out these 90-year-old index books and find them. So, and all she's doing, she's getting all this done for us, and she's gone through tens of thousands in less than a year of time, and got them all done, almost all of them done, she's only got three books left to do, and that covers almost 20 years of time that she's gotten all these records updated for us. And that's what the part-time position was hired for, that's why I requested to start with, and she's doing exactly what I wanted her to do, and is making excellent progress. I want to take this moment on record to thank my staff, they've done a wonderful, wonderful job in this ever-changing landscape that COVID's given us. They've been diligent, and they've been prepared to do what we have to do to keep their customers serviced like they should be, and they've been very wonderful, I just want to thank them publicly, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I think interest rates are gonna be like four years, two, three, four years before they go back up.
Yeah, that's not surprising at all.
What I've heard.
Thank you, Brenna, appreciate it. I'm sure you're here to take your money, I just bought some property, and you didn't have no problem taking my money.
Yeah.
What is a conveyance, a fee or a tax?
It's money that we get to the state, that's built into that statute, the county is allowed to retain 2% of the conveyance of the half of the excise tax we collect, it's written in the statute that we can retain 2% as a collecting fee and remitting it to the state, is that about right, Julia?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just built into the statute, so we take advantage of it, why not?
Brenna, I know I've covered into this, what is this Domestic Violence Center for?
It's a state fund, through the, yeah, the state runs it, and the Children's Trust Fund too, it's also, everything, any fee we collect is by statute, by the General Assembly, but we don't make our own fees. The only fee we have any control over is our plain paper copy fee, that's all we want to have control over, everything else is set by the legislature. And, you know, we have a lobbyist with the Register of Deeds Association, and we work with legislatures on legislation throughout the session, and that's one thing they wrote in years ago, was to remit some of the fees we collected.
That's just how it's broken down?
Uh huh, off a marriage license, and part of it goes to the Domestic Violence Center, part of it goes to the Children's Trust Fund, it's $25, excuse me, it's $30, I think, to the Domestic Violence Center, $5 to the Children's Trust Fund, out of $60 for a marriage license, and we keep the other 25.
Plug it up. Commissioner Minnowell?
One quick thing, first of all, thank you for, I really like the way that you've broken everything down since you've become Minister of Deeds, and I am assuming that the technology, transfer from a lot of paper pencil to the technology part of it has been before, is it correct?
Uh huh, yeah, it's utilizing technology is one of the best ways to smooth out the process, the way people do business with us, electronic recording, my predecessor, Kathy Young, put that in place in October 2016, and it's about, right now, since COVID, it's about 90% of our business is done electronically now. It keeps the attorneys from having to come here, you know, some still do, we have two local attorneys that have not gone to it, and they're, they've just, you know, they're more comfortable coming to the office, one's here in town, and the other one is in rural hall, but they, they didn't want to go to it, they are all more comfortable just coming in the office, and that's fine, we miss seeing faces, but it doesn't mean that we're any less busy. We have to stay at that monitor all the time, because those documents are just coming right in, just sitting there waiting for them to pop up, every few minutes, we're getting one in. Like I said, the transactions are going up, they're not going down, and it's gonna be like that, I assume, for a while, but the technology just makes everything a lot smoother, it makes everything more accessible, and that's what a big cornerstone of my campaign to come in was, was accessibility.
Thank you, Brenna.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to our discussion agenda. First item, Mr. Boos, tethering ordinance request, Ms. Kathleen Edwards and Susan Snyder.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Edwards. Do I need to state my address? No, okay. Susan Snyder and I are proposing an ordinance to restrict the continuous tethering of dogs in the county. I've provided each of you with a revised proposed ordinance that has better formatting than the first one you got, and I'd like for everybody to replace the one they had with the one you're getting today.
Just to clarify, there's no changes in like the, how it reads, right?
Right. It should be identical except for the indentations, which makes it easier to read. We received a question from the vice chair about how the ordinance would be enforced, and every county enforces them differently, but I've spoken with several counties who have successful tethering ordinances, and generally, what they do is the person in the county responsible for press releases would notify local TV stations, local newspaper, and local radio stations, and after a six-month phase-in period, allowing residents time to make more humane accommodations for their pets, the ordinance would then go into effect. During the phase-in period, there would be no fines for violations, only citations requiring compliance. Enforcement would be complaint-driven, meaning that people could report violations they see to animal control or to the deputy sheriffs. We do not expect that officers would be canvassing the county for violations, excuse me, but we hope that if residents see something, they will say something. While some dogs are chained in plain view of the road, most are not, therefore, it will require vigilance on the part of the community at large to increase the effectiveness of the ordinance. I don't know of any reason why we shouldn't be able to agree on some language and get the ordinance to the county attorney by early March. It is our hope that this ordinance can be voted on by early April, so that it can, so that the phase-in period can begin to run, and it can be in effect before the winter of 2021. Winter and summer are deadly for chained dogs, and every summer, we lose some, and every winter, we lose some. In counties where pets cannot be tethered continuously, there are fewer dog bite calls, fewer cruelty calls, and fewer unwanted litters of puppies. In addition, it has not been shown to be the case that passing an ordinance of this type will appreciably increase the number of strays or owner surrenders. In other words, when you pass a tethering law restricting chaining, people don't just go out and turn all their dogs loose, that's not generally what takes place. Now, I would like to read a brief list of ordinances, some of which have been in existence for a decade or more, to give you an idea of where we stand in comparison to other counties in North Carolina. All of these are in North Carolina. They're alphabetical, I'm just gonna read the year they were enacted, and just the gist of the law. Asheville, North Carolina, 2009, it shall be unlawful for an owner to leave a dog unattended and restrained by tether while outdoors. Cary, North Carolina, 2012, animals may not be left unattended while tethered. Chapel Hill, North Carolina, 2009, it shall be unlawful to tether a dog, except under the following circumstances, shepherding or herding livestock, lawful dog activities, such as training, law enforcement, veterinary treatment, and the pursuit of working or competing in these legal endeavors, or meeting the requirements of a camping or recreational area. Clayton, North Carolina, 2008, tethering is banned. Cumberland County, North Carolina, 2009, no pet shall be tethered outdoors unless the keeper or owner of the pet is holding the tether. Davidson, North Carolina, 2012, this ordinance prohibits the chaining of a dog, with the exception of instances in which the dog is temporarily tethered under the supervision of the responsible party. Durham County, North Carolina, 2008, tethering animals is prohibited, except when they are on an attended leash. Enfield, North Carolina, 2013, dogs may not be tethered to a stationary object. Forsyth County, North Carolina, 2013, dogs may not be tethered to a stationary object. Forsyth County, North Carolina, 2016, no person shall tether, fasten, chain tie, or restrain a dog, or cause such restraining of a dog to any stationary object. Guilford County, North Carolina, 2013, this ordinance prohibits unattended tethering except during activities such as hunting and performance events. Halifax County, North Carolina, 2019, it shall be unlawful to tether an unattended dog outdoors, including hunting dogs. Hertford, North Carolina, no dog may be tethered unattended. New Hanover County, North Carolina, 2010, dogs may not be tethered except under certain conditions such as obedience training and law enforcement training. Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, 2006, this ordinance prohibits the tethering of dogs. It shall be unlawful to tether an unattended dog outside of the house. Surrey County, North Carolina, 2016, dogs are continuously, I'm sorry, dogs continuously maintained on a tether shall be deemed to be improperly confined. Weldon, North Carolina, 2013, no unattended tethering is permitted. Woodland, North Carolina, 2015, no dog shall be tethered as a means of permanent confinement. And I just wanted to read those so that everybody understands that we're lagging behind here. And I'd like to read a brief letter from Kyle Hall that was sent to Andy Nickleston and copied to us. It says, Chairman Nickleston, this is from Kyle Hall, North Carolina General Assembly, House of Representatives, you all know who he is. Our office has been contacted by numerous constituents concerned with dog tethering in Stokes County. I'm sure that you and your colleagues on the board have been approached on the subject as well. After reading the latest article on this issue in the Stokes News and after further research, I ask that you and the board consider rules similar to those of Surrey County and other counties in our area. And I would like to ask Susan Snyder to come up and read two brief letters of support that we received supporting this ordinance. And then I have two questions for each of you.
Hi. Thank you for listening to us today. I have lived in Stokes County for 44 years and am a retired school teacher from the school system here. And this will be brief. First letter is from Northview Animal Hospital in King, North Carolina, written September 22 of 2020. Mrs. Snyder, as a practicing veterinarian in Stokes County for over 25 years, I can personally attest to witnessing the horrific animal suffering brought about as a result of tethering. Collars and chains embedded in the skin around the neck, necrotic limbs as a result of a chain or cable being wrapped tightly around an appendage, causing a strangulation injury, heat stroke as a result of a tethered animal not being able to reach shade or water, and death by freezing as a result of a tether getting hung up and not allowing an animal to assess shelter and warmth are just a few of the inhumane consequences of animal tethering that having seen or forever etched in my mind. Sorry, I'm nervous, y'all. Even on a good day, if there ever is one for a tethered animal, when none of the aforementioned consequences of tethering occur, one must always remember that a tethered animal, if attacked by one or more predators, has only one escape path, and that escape path abruptly ends at the end of the tether. This puts a tethered animal at a tremendous life-altering and often life-ending disadvantage. I humbly beg those in authority in Stokes County to do the right thing for the precious animals that God has entrusted to our care and pass an ordinance banning the outdated, inhumane act of animal tethering. Sincerely, Adrienne M. Krieger, DVM. The next letter is sent from King Veterinary Hospital, written October 15 of 2020. I am writing in support of a Stokes County ordinance restricting tethering. Tethering has been shown to adversely affect both the physical and behavioral health of dogs. Tethered dogs often become aggressive toward both people and other animals. Because they are unable to retreat, they are forced to attack whenever they feel threatened. This can result in injury or even death to both the tethered dog and the person or animal seen as a threat. During 35 years of veterinary practice in Stokes County, I have seen many examples of the harm that can come from tethering. I have removed embedded collars that have cut through the skin and into the muscle of the neck. I have had to shave dogs in order to remove the twisted cable that was so tangled in their coat they couldn't walk. I have euthanized dogs who had been mauled while they were tied out and could not get away from an attacking animal. I have treated dogs with heat stroke after they got tangled in their cable and couldn't reach water or shade. There are undoubtedly other worse cases that veterinarians never see. Tethered dogs can also be a public health issue. Dogs are social animals and often develop behavioral problems when they have minimal human contact. A study from the December 15, 2013 issue of the Journal of the American Veterinary Medical Association found that 76% of human deaths from dog attacks came from dogs that were isolated from human interaction. Several counties surrounding us have already enacted tethering ordinances. Stokes County should join them in eliminating this harmful and inhumane practice. Sincerely, David R. Bowen, DVM. Thank you for your time.
Before we go into the questions and comments, we also have Officer Cohn that's here, in case we have any kind of questions with the law enforcement. So what does, any commissioners have any questions or comments with it?
The, first of all, I'd like to thank you ladies for presenting today and for, and for putting this draft ordinance together. I'm in violent agreement with you that we need to do something, and I would do it quicker than the timeline that you spoke about earlier. I don't understand why we couldn't do it quicker than that. The, I happen to have a rescue dog at home who, first thing we had to do when we got her was nurse her wounds from having an embedded chain in her neck. It was, it was one of those chains like you see on a porch swing. And we had to, and Dr. Cowan had to cut whole chunks of her neck out to get this thing out. We put it in, actually, we kept it in the freezer for a long time, as evidence, hoping we could figure out who did it. We never were able to do that, but we would have loved to have prosecuted whoever did that if we could have caught them. So, you know, this is kind of personal to me. The other thing I would validate is the comments that were made, both in those letters and from, I think, one of you ladies there. Whenever this happens to a dog, it really does affect their behavior. Because this dog of ours, even though she was really clever about how sweet she was at the, at the doctor's office when we were adopting her, later on, behavioral problems kind of surfaced. And she's still sweet as she can be, but she's a little bit aggressive towards strangers. So I suspect she was some kind of a guard dog or something whenever they had the chain around her. So I really think this is a great idea. I've got a few other comments I'd like to make after reading through all the material, some of which you just read and some of which you commented on earlier. First of all, I would like to make it clear in the ordinance that under no circumstances do we put a chain around a dog's neck without a collar. And that's probably implied in there, but I like to have that very clear.
We do need to spell that out, though. The ordinance is a starting place. It's not a finished work product. And I would also like to specify, no more narrow than one inch in width.
Yeah, that makes sense.
On Jessup Road, there's a puppy that still has the collar it had on. It's tripled in size over the past five months. And the collar is so thin, and it's on a towing chain, this puppy. And it can very easily grow into the neck because the dog has outgrown the collar.
Absolutely, yeah. I agree with that 100%. I'd also ask it if you guys, you've kind of alluded to it in the material you put together, but what unintended consequences we may expect from doing this and what, as far as enforcement, if there's anything that the sheriff might run into that would be an unintended consequence. There's always the issue of hunting dogs, so make sure that it doesn't do something that is completely contrary to what people do when they use hunting dogs. You said make it complaint-driven. I agree with that. And you addressed this in your comments. The, we do a lot of things in the local government that are complaint-driven. And a lot of times, the reason for that is we don't have enough staff to do it any other way. So I think that's probably a good approach. But at the same time, and I think you almost said the same thing, if any of our government folks are out that are in this business, or any of them actually that are out doing their daily government services to the citizens, and they see an example of this, we don't need to wait for a complaint. They need to take action.
I think they should.
Or they need to make the complaint, I guess you would say. I would also like our animal advisory council to look at the final version of this and make comments since we put that group together in order to review these kind of policies and endorse them. And I'm sure they'd be willing to have a special meeting to do that. One thing that I would like to see in there that, to make it really clear, tethering a dog is not necessarily cruel or illegal if it's done for the right purpose and for certain reasons. And you sort of alluded to some of that. What I would like to see you guys, when we revise this thing, is, is put a clear definition, and you have, and it's scattered through the materials that you put together, or some pieces of it, or, but have a clear, concise definition in one place that says, here is what, this is the definition of legal tethering. And then, and then there, because I've seen these things at the, at the pet store that you screw in the ground and they go around in a circle. And, and so I think that's, that's kind of made to temporarily tether a dog for a few minutes or something. And that's not necessarily legal or cruel. So I want to make, have a clear distinction so we don't confuse people about what they should do or can do and what they wouldn't do.
Right. The way it's written right now, it does not provide for the old lady who just hooks her dog up in the morning and the night to do potty, you know, go potty.
Yeah.
Right now, the way it's written, there's no accommodation for that, and there should be. So like I said, it's a starting point. And I'm excited to hear that you think it can be moved through the protocols faster than we were suggesting. But I would really like to ask that someone on the board sponsor the ordinance so that we can, so that Susan and I can navigate the impediments that are unique to this county. And we would also like to be actively involved in any additions, deletions, and edits. Not that you need our approval, you don't, obviously, but we would like to be involved in any effort to make it better.
Yeah, I'll also ask you, as you redo this or revise it, too, Eric and the sheriff, look at it, make sure that we don't have things in there that are unenforceable. I mentioned having a clear definition, and you can address all the things like the little lady putting the dog out to go to the bathroom, all that, in that, in that clear definition of what is appropriate and what's legal.
Right. This isn't targeting people who tether responsibly. We're targeting the people who are neglectful and don't pour out the ice.
We've all seen them. Just have to ride around and you'll see them. The, you put in here this thing, you're assuming, I guess, that people are going to build an enclosure once they can't tether anymore. So you put the information in here about enclosures and the size of, of the space for certain sized dogs, I think is the way you worded it or whatever.
Right.
I was just curious what that, what that size amount, was it based on a statute or something?
It's not based on statute, but in Surrey County, we don't have enclosure minimums. I proposed an ordinance against tethering in Surrey, and it passed in 2016. And we didn't include any enclosure size minimums. So there is a trailer with eight boxes behind it, and they're four feet by four feet square. And inside are rotted pallets, and there are large breed dogs in every single one of them. And without a state cruelty investigator, we can't do anything about it because our county didn't pass any enclosure size minimums. If you have a German shepherd who weighs 95 to 120 pounds, and you buy a 10-foot by 10-foot chain length fence, which is 100 square feet, and then you buy a 2-foot by 3-foot igloo house and put that in, and then you buy a 1-foot by 2-foot automatic feeder and waterer, the dog is down to about three feet to urinate, defecate, sleep, and exercise. And that's just not realistic. It's not.
We may have some, we have other animal control ordinances, and we need to make sure that the two match each other. I don't know if they address.
I think that's what the county attorney does.
Or not. But I see why, at first, I didn't understand why you had that in there, but then I figured you're trying to anticipate what people are going to do when they don't tether. So I guess it makes sense to include it in here.
Yes.
And make sure it doesn't violate any statutes or that it's endorsed a reasonable amount of size without being too big. I mean, you know, a lot of folks that tether dogs aren't, don't have a lot of extra cash laying around, so they're not going to go real elaborate on building a cage. But we, some minimums, I think, are fine to have in there.
It's free to bring them into your home, and it's free to potty train them.
Let me see, just a couple of other things. Of course, I'd like to get, he does animal control, the sheriff does here, so make sure he endorses our final product and the enforceability of it especially.
Yes.
And.
We don't want to pass a law that can't be enforced. We don't want to pass a law that can't be enforced.
That's true. That's absolutely.
That'll just aggravate everybody on the animal control.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman. If we can do those things, I think we're, I only see the reason we need to drag this out.
Oh, great.
That's the rest of the board. I think any of our board members would probably sponsor it. I don't want to speak for them.
I just would like to have a point person so I can check on where it is this week, what we did last week, and what we're going to do next week.
That'd be the clerk.
Okay. Oh, she does everything.
She's the clerk to our board.
She's our point person. Okay.
I have some comments, but I didn't know if she wanted to ask her question first or?
Well, I think my, I'm hoping that you all just answered my question. My first, I can't find my questions, but my first question was going to be, would one of you like to sponsor this ordinance? And my second question was going to be, is anyone on the board opposed to the passage of the ordinance as written? But as we just discussed, I'd like to do some revisions myself. I think we need to have a provision for humane tethering that's responsible tethering for people who do it right. And.
Yeah. So.
You go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. My comments are just, that I do appreciate you and Susan coming out today. I think we do need to be proactive in this situation and not reactive. And when I say that, I mean, you know, we know that dogs that are tethered on chains and sometimes treated cruelly, and not all of them that are tethered are treated cruelly, but they tend to be more aggressive because they can't get away. It's that fight or flight instinct, and they will become aggressive because they have, that's their defense mechanism because they can't run and they can't get away. And so, you know, all it takes, and we've all heard stories of small children crossing the path of, of a tethered dog and attacking them. And that's what I want to avoid. And I feel like we do need something to, I do think, to address that. But I think this needs some work, and I think the county attorney needs to look at it as well as the committee. as well as, um, the committee or whatever to, um, to give some feedback, uh, to some changes. Like you say, um, the, uh, responsible tethering, you know, you don't want people caught in this that, that are, you know, have, for some reason or another, have to tether, uh, an animal for a short while outside on a swivel, as he was saying or something.
Like someone in a wheelchair.
That has, um, you know, I mean, we have, um, we don't have any dogs right now. We live on a, a very busy highway on sixty-six, but my grand dogs visit and, um, you know, we have a run, uh, out there sometimes, uh, well, we don't even use that unless my grandkids are there and there's like other kids there that aren't used to a German shepherd, um, you know, and he's not aggressive at all. He's a sweet public, I'm from Andy. But, um, you know, some children are just afraid of dogs, so, you know, but we're all outside with them when, when they're on the run or whatever, but.
What do you suggest, are you suggesting that in the ordinance, we make a provision for dogs at large as well? Or you said children coming in contact with a chain dog? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, that's a concern that I have, um, of why an ordinance might be a good idea, you know, uh, to do something because that is one of my concerns, but I know that a tethering crosses all socioeconomic. It's not just one group of people or other that do that. And some do it at night for a guard dog outside. Um, I don't know anybody personally that does that, but I've heard of some people that, that do that. And, um, not that I'm saying I agree with it or don't, but it's just, um, I think that responsible pet ownership is something that a lot of people don't understand and they don't take the time. Uh, I don't know that they, they understand what proper care looks like because if they were raised a certain way, it might not have ever been modeled for them, what proper pet care looks like. So I think the education piece of this is going to be very important. If it is passed, we have to make sure that the population is aware of why it would be done and what the purpose is. And, um, I also think there are going to be people who just can't afford to maybe do it properly. So my next question would be, have you looked at any grant funding for, um, maybe that could provide to help people who want to do the right thing, but maybe don't have the money to do the right thing, to help provide shelter? Or maybe they, they're elderly or have, uh, some type of handicap where they can't build an enclosure themselves or afford it? See, and then, you know, you said most of the times when this is passed, people don't just turn their dogs loose, which I would hope not.
No.
But, um, I think we could expect a, a small degree of, of that to happen. Maybe they just won't chain them at all and they'll just be running around, I don't know. Um, that's something to, to consider as well. But, uh, I think that, you know, a dog is not a long ornament and I, I don't like to see them out there, uh, without proper shelter and food and water and, and chained up. But, um, and I, I want to do something, um, in regards to this. I'm just not sure, um, how deep and how wide yet. And I think that's why we need the sheriff department to look at it, the county attorney, the advisory council. But I'm with Rick, sooner than later, you know, keep it, keep it moving, yeah.
We don't have to reinvent the wheel, this has been done all over the world. There are countries that don't allow chaining. The whole country of Austria, the whole country of Sweden, the whole country of Denmark, the whole country of Germany. There are entire states in the United States that don't allow chaining. All of Pennsylvania, California, Colorado, Connecticut, there are.
Right.
And so, and even within our state, the laws that I've read, the tethering ordinances I've read to you are all more restrictive than what we're proposing.
Right, I would like to see if, uh, we could get a copy of Surrey County's and just compare it to what we're, it may be identical of what we're looking at, I don't know what the differences would be.
I studied every tethering law in the state to come up with the best language I thought would be agreeable in, in this county.
Got you.
I, I don't think Surrey has an ideal law. It has too many loopholes.
Mm hmm.
It allows people to keep their dogs if they get an exemption. So if you know somebody and you want an exemption, you can get one. Also, you can build a, you can build a trolley cable run in the, and leave the dog outside year round. What we're trying to stop is people leaving dogs outside year round. Food, water and shelter are mandated by law, but they are not enough for a dog and they've never been enough. What dogs have to have is human interaction, they have to have human touch. They have to have, dogs are social animals like we are and they have to have a social life. They have to have that or they don't flourish, they develop behavioral problems, neurological problems, pacing, chewing on their feet till they bleed, you know, repetitive motion disorder from being locked in one place for too long. Uh, we don't want to pass a law like Surrey's because Surrey's allows people who can get away with it to not follow the law. And that's absolutely not what we should do. We should have our own law based on our own values and our own moral compasses and we should sit down and roll our sleeves up and work together to make it agreeable to everyone. But we can't do it if we don't talk to each other. And, um, I don't think that Surrey's is a good model to go by, I really don't.
Well, the reason I suggested Surrey would be because they are a rural county and a lot of the places that you read on there are, um, not anything like Stokes County. So I think that in a city area, a more populated area where you have a lot more apartments and, and things of, uh, other nature, it's, it's just different than a very rural county like, like we have.
Mm hmm.
So that's why I mentioned Surrey County's in particular, because I know they're rural like us, so. I don't have anything else.
Uh, Sarah, thank you for coming. I met back with them December twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty and talked with them on this matter and, uh, I'm highly in support of it, uh, but at the same token, it needs a little bit of tweaking done to it. Um, I got four little furry animals myself, but I was forced enough to have a fist in backyard for mine, so, uh, but, um, and I argued with it to get with the sheriff and make sure everything's in accordance and all. And, you know, we, we can't expect our neighbors to spend every day doing this, which they won't.
Right.
And, and like Commissioner Morris said earlier, a lot of this could be, you know, all the counties, all the employees, you know. Uh, I myself have run calls, emergency calls and saw this and called animal control.
Good.
Look at this, uh, because I do love animals very much, but, uh, and again, another thing, uh, things don't need to be drug on out, on out like they have been in the past. We need to get with the county attorney, look at this thing, tweak it, get it, and get it done, get it in place.
That makes me so happy. I want to tell you all, um, Vice Chairwoman Cox's suggestion that we have educational materials, I'll print those up at my own expense, we can sit down together and, uh, there are already educational materials in existence on the web and at the county, um, at the library and we can, we can make it what we want it to be and have it be colorful. And I'll print those up at Staples at my own expense and we'll get them into the hands of people who work for the city, who see this in the backyards and behind the trailers and in the rental districts and places where, for whatever reason, landlords will not allow pets in the house. And give people guidelines, you know, that when it's above this temperature or below this temperature, you can't leave your dog outside. And, you know, also they need exercise every day, they need, they need society, they need consortium, they need to be with somebody. Somebody needs to be spending several hours a day with that dog. And, um, we can't legislate morality, but we can make the lives of these animals much better if we pass this ordinance and give people an opportunity to spend time with their dogs. And if they just can't afford a dog and they can't afford a fence and they don't want to bring them in, they have no business owning a dog, period. There are going to be people in wheelchairs, like you said, the elderly, and I will be willing to, uh, seek out grant writing, um, grant proposal writing opportunities. I've already put a post on Facebook, I have somewhere around seven hundred and forty friends, asking would people be willing to build fences in twenty twenty-one for chained dogs in Stokes County? Five of the respondents were from out of county. But we did get five respondents, which is better than zero. And I've been in touch with Kathleen Leach, who runs Unchained Guilford, and she's been building fences for people for fifteen years, well, not personally, but she, you have to recruit volunteers, you have to get building materials donated. There's a lot of organization and coordination that goes on, you have to schedule the builds, you have to hope it doesn't rain, you have to have post hole diggers and tools and pickup trucks and a lot of things, you know, it's, getting something like that off the ground is not what Susan and I signed up to do. But we agree that someone needs to do it. But we may not be the ideal people to do it, but I can certainly give anyone who wants to do it a hand in getting it off the ground.
That's great.
We're too old to do that.
Commissioner, how old do you have in that?
Um, well, I, I'm sort of, as I come out and say what I say, you can see it would not affect me personally. Me and my wife have a teacup poodle that weighs three pounds and we keep it in the house. We drove sixteen hours to Louisiana to purchase that puppy. And so, that is our baby. Sixteen months old, so, um, we don't have outside dogs. We have that one teacup, uh, she's in our house and she's potty trained and we take care of her. So I don't have the outside dog situation at my home. I can certainly understand what they're saying. I would like to make sure that we get their revisions, our animal advisory committee, and our sheriff's department, and our attorney, all involved, make sure we on the right track. You know what I'm saying? Because, you know, when you got a little three pound poodle that stays in your house and we take care of it all the time, I'm, I'm not used to the outside animal dog that is chained. I'm sure it goes on, don't get me wrong, I'm sure it does. But I will go back to what Commissioner Cox said, which is, we are a rural county. All right, Surrey, Surrey may have some loopholes in there that may not be good, I don't know. Uh, but I do think that we need to make sure we're on solid ground.
Mm hmm.
And that's why I would say, yeah, our sheriff's department. There, I see Eric sitting like there. Uh, talk to Sheriff Marshall, talk to Ty, our attorney. I'll make sure everything looks good and then I would want to make sure that, uh, after all that's done, that the board is in, just senses whether. It's just for me, I know there's a lot of outside dogs in Stokes County, I know that. And I don't know how many are chained or anything, I have no idea.
Approximately eight hundred to a thousand.
So I really can't say a lot right now, it, it doesn't, you know. I hope you understand what I'm saying, with my inside dog, I, I don't deal with the outside dog or chaining a dog, so I would want our law enforcement involved, our attorney involved, then anything that the commissioners have in their mind, that would need to be placed in there, I would certainly want to hear from them.
Yeah. I'd like to try to keep it out of the hands of the animal control advisory council. I've spoken with four animal control advisory board. I don't have any problem with people at animal control at all. I think they should be consulted and their input should be taken into consideration. But the board itself, the people are burned out, some of them have been there ten, twelve years. They don't feel like they're listened to, most, they've done precious little in the time they've been meeting. I just don't have confidence that, that that's, I feel like it's a good law and if it goes there, it will die. That's what I feel like. And they don't feel like they're listened to and they feel burned out. They don't meet often enough to get anything done, they either meet quarterly or every other month. They just don't meet often enough to get anything accomplished in a timely manner. And, um, several of them with whom I've spoken are just very dispirited and really not engaged and really just given up, they've given up. And they, it may be time to revamp the animal control advisory board and get some people on there who, you know, who really are, um, interested in leading and not trailing behind. All right.
We're going to have to move on.
Okay, thank you for.
We'll get with Shannon and we'll get some revisions, I've talked to Sheriff.
So in November of twenty nineteen, the animal control advisory board brought in that adequate shelter for dogs.
They did update that, yes.
That's been updated, but this sounds like some of this language would change some of that maybe, the adequate shelter, you're talking about putting size limitations on shelter kind of things?
It's not, it's not, now, there's meant the doghouse itself.
Uh huh.
The four sides and a roof and a floor.
Mm hmm.
Okay, we're talking about the enclosure that the doghouse sits inside of. We're not talking about the size of the doghouse. We're talking about the.
This doesn't specify doghouse, it just says adequate shelter. So that's, we'd probably kind of tie together a little bit with it. And I know that the animal control advisory board has a meeting scheduled, um, that they contacted me about. Candace Floyd, who's in that group, contacted me a while back, um, with their newest schedule. I've got it on my calendar in the wall in there, so I don't know, because I don't, and Eric, you may answer better to this than me. I'm not sure how you do all this without involving them a little bit, because that's the way it's set up. Is to have the animal control advisory board make, make a recommendation to you along with who's in charge of animal control. I just want to make sure we get everybody involved, it has to be involved, it doesn't slow it down.
Well, I understand, I don't mind if the board works with the animal control advisory board, I don't mind. But we would prefer to work with the commissioners on this. And I want to thank everybody for listening, I want to thank everybody for their questions and their time and their thoughtfulness, especially Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Thomas. Just want to thank them for the amount of time that they put in thinking about this and the excellent remarks, comments and questions that they had for us. Makes our time worthwhile, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We want the item B, the Stokes County Community Child Protection Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report.
Yeah, I volunteer to see any safety development on that, but it's not anything really major that needs to be approved. So the, um, it's the Stokes County Community Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team's annual report. They're required by statute to submit it to the board commissioners, it doesn't need an approval, it has to submit it. I'm not sure if you had time to look over that, but just list kind of what they do and things they've been doing. Um, cases they check out throughout the year that have been turned into them, um, as far as what they're reviewing, like if there's a, a death of a child in the county, they'll review that page, they'll review any cases that were coming through DSS, things like that. Um, other than that, besides submitting that annual report to you, they do need to put on the next meeting that actually the, the Stokes County Community Child Protection and Child Fatality Teams members to be updated. Um, some of these are mandated by statute as far as who they have to be on there. Others are appointed, but the whole list needs to be approved, so we can just put that list as presented on the action agenda for the next meeting, what they need approval on.
Okay, any questions, comments, comment?
I think I had one, I'm going back to look in here, um. Um, I read over that report and just a couple of quick comments that I had that I noticed is, um, that I do agree with there needs to be a plan for better and easier access for mental health, substance abuse. Uh, I know they're looking toward that, um, and raising awareness in schools regarding, um, suicide and mental health, alcohol and drug abuse, and that's really of utmost importance and that's where we have to start. And that's key really to preventing, um, these child deaths. Uh, it's, I know the mental health, uh, aspect in schools right now with COVID and everything and, and the schools being closed and some sports not happening and not being able to go to social events is really affecting these kids and, um, uh, the want, the referrals to mental health in, in high school is just, uh, is tripled at least. So, I mean, that's, that's something we have to. So, I mean, that's, that's something we have to... I noticed this, this was the 2019, as far as the deaths, which we only had two child deaths in the county in 2019. She said it's like a year behind. And, and those both seem to, to not be preventable deaths. So that's what you want to always look at and strive for is preventing deaths. And, and when there is a child death, and it's something that would have not been preventable. I know the drug treatment is an issue for our county, and that's addressed in that report as well. We need to remove the stigma of the, that people will reach out and take the help. And she mentioned in that report that people are not taking advantages of the services that we have available. And I don't know if that's a stigma thing or if people are not aware sometimes of the services that our county can offer, because there are numerous things that they actually can do and resources that maybe they don't know that they could take advantage of. There, I'm going to ask you this question because I just wasn't sure if... They had filled the position for the, the person who, they had a position for people who assist in people finding the right resources. And I guess that person is hired now or working?
Was that through DSS?
I think so, yeah, not the health department. I think that's what it was. Yeah.
Posted for another recently, and I'm pretty sure, because that was in the budget. They had that in there to make that a permanent position.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know if they had filled it or not. Yeah, maybe you can find out and just email us. But that's all I had on, on that.
Mr. Man, how old do you have any of that?
I was reading something through somebody's notes here. Does the county offer any type of drugs, substance abuse programs here to help people?
Well, not necessarily like through the county itself, but like Cardinal, who they deal with. They have some things set up throughout the county force, like county for sons that are set aside for that, like the mental, mental health services and things like that and drug abuse kind of thing.
Right.
So, and I can get you some more information on that as far as through Cardinal and through DSS or what else out there and what kind of programs.
That is a problem that our county is, don't, don't have. Most time they have to go out of county to get it.
The reason I'm asking that question, I know, I know several young folks in our county that go out of county for drug and treatment help. That got hooked on heroin. And Slade County seems to be the only place they can go. And I feel like as a county, we should be able to offer something to help these folks instead of going to another county. We big enough county, we should be able to help people. Again, I hate people who got hooked on substance abuse, but I guess that's just part of life. And, but in other sense, I would love to be able to help these people in some way without having to depend on another county.
I think even Yankin has some, but they may be, I don't know that they're county sponsored or just privately ran or, or through a ministry. A lot of them are through ministries, but I don't even know of anything that I'm aware of in our county that is a in-house, even a ministry opportunity. Because I know several that have went out of county to get, to get treatment. And the, the problem is, and you are well aware of this, there's a small window of when somebody that is struggling with substance abuse wants help. And if they can't get in, and a lot of places won't take you unless you've already went through the withdrawals and stuff. And that's a problem, because they can't make it through the withdrawals without getting back on it again. And, and that window of when they will ask for help or need help is very small. And that's what we got to target. And I think our county, the community paramedic program and things, we've got some things going definitely in the right direction. But Evelyn Lemmons is doing a great job with what she's doing to reach out and, and help people and connect people. But it's tough in there. I don't know of a family that's not got some loved one, family member, somebody that's dealing with this and struggling with it.
There's that North Carolina 211 line, too, that's on our website in North Carolina. It's got information for drug treatment programs, mental health referrals, and all kinds of programs.
Yeah.
And Stacy was texting me during that when she was listening, and she was saying that that position we're talking about, the second substance abuse liaison is filled. It's only filled right now through Jean, because that's how long the money was budgeted for. And they did that sort of, just approved it, that we have to reinvent the position. I'm sure they would keep it. And then as far as the other position, it's a permanent position. And she was just saying with some of those programs with mental health and drug treatments, they have tried and tried to implement more stuff in the county. They just didn't have any. They had set up a thing one time with transportation, put some of the MIA money in there, and were offering to trans for people, you know, to places to go.
It's tough.
Things and just couldn't get anybody interested in it. I mean, just couldn't get them to come out.
A lot of, like Vineyard in Winston, you have to go every day. Every day you have to go. And a lot of times it's early in the morning. And, you know, a lot of these people that are trying to kick it or trying to get a job, but then they have to go somewhere to check in and every day. And it's, that's tough, especially when it's out of county.
You two see me after class and I'll go over something with you. It'll be interesting. Mr. Man, how old do you have any of that?
I would just say certainly we always want to help people with the drug problem. In my opinion, working through the school system. I saw a lot. Just put it out there, our drugs in our county. Everybody knows that. I'm not telling you anything or stuff. But I do know that over the years, we have, as Shannon said, through our maintenance of effort monies, MOEs, we have tried to get, provide that money for mental health and drug substance. And we have contributed. We used to get 395,000 a year. Stacy Almson, I was involved with that with Cardinal. I used to be on the Cardinal Board of Directors years ago when I first started this. And it sort of went haywire there toward the end. I know one thing is, I think if there's anything that we as kind of commissioners can move forward even more and try to maybe get some grant money, something that they can go toward that, it would help.
Yeah, definitely. There's grants out there.
Then you said you'd be on that next action.
Yeah, I just need to have this.
Okay.
If we can move ours, put this, the team members with on action for approval for the next meeting. All, all we need approval on together is just the report. It's a primary review.
Thank you.
Go ahead, move on to item C, the Tax Administration Monthly Report. Mr. Green. Appreciate you waiting so patiently for us getting to your...
Good afternoon. I don't think it'll take me too long, hopefully. First thing I'd like to say is welcome back, Shannon. Glad you're, glad you're doing good. You gave us a scare there. And I'd also like to thank Jake and Shannon in our IT department for getting those computers where we could work from home remotely. That was a lifesaver for me, because I worked the last 10 days at home on this revaluation, because COVID hit my home with my oldest daughter. She's doing good, but I had to quarantine, so thanks for that.
The CARES Act money, so I'm prepared to, so we will.
So that work, it was flawless. I mean, David with IT helped me get it set up, and it worked smooth as a dollar.
I just want to say we get started. Every department has really worked hard to get through this whole pandemic and going through restrictions and everything else. I appreciate you guys for answering the door, helping people get served and paying taxes. I've heard nothing but good compliments from it. And that comes straight from you guys here at this building. I really appreciate that, and I'm glad to hear, glad you're doing better, so.
Yeah, you're cer, you're certainly welcome. And that's, that's our job, you know? We're a team here in public service is what we do. Yeah. But the first item, like always, is our monthly collections report. Like to tell you that we've collected almost $21.6 million. We're 97.2% of the way there with five months to go and a little over five months to go in the fiscal year budget. So it looks like we're on track to probably not only meet, but exceed the budgeted amount. Next item is the Quarterly Garnishment and Discovery Report. This tells you that we have discovered a lot of property that, that taxpayers weren't listing. A lot of that's off of information we received from the DMV. And so we've, we've done that. And we've also, our collections departments have done a lot of garnishment. And we have, we have done that in, in a taxpayer-friendly way. You know, we're working, we're working with folks. We understand a lot of hardship going on with the COVID. And we try to take direction from the board and be very taxpayer-friendly. Next item is our Quarterly Report for the EMS billing and collection. We've built a little over 1,800 transports so far this fiscal year, charged down a little over $1.1 million and collected a little over $600,000 of that amount. Next item is our Quarterly Interstate Data Max Collections Report, including the NC debt set off we've collected so far for this quarter, a little over $3,700. And the next three items are releases and refunds. We have one account on the releases and refund less than $100. We have four accounts on the releases and, I mean, for the releases more than $100. And then we have three accounts for refunds more than $100. Final two items are the la, next to the last item is our 2021 Board of Equalization and Review Dates that we're requesting. Normally, we request two dates. This year, we're going to request four. Hopefully, that's enough where we're sending out these notices. And, and if it's not, you know, we'll, we'll come back to you and ask for more dates. But hopefully, we can, we can get them done in four days. And if any of those dates, you know, don't work for the board, we can certainly adjust. But the only thing to keep in mind is the statute says that the first meeting can occur before the first Monday in April. And it has to occur before the first Monday in May. And then the final item that I've got is about the revaluation. I had planned on bringing you guys some detailed statistics and numbers, but we've got it just about wrapped up, but I wanted to be sure that I give you the most accurate and best picture. And we're almost there. I mean, we, we're there. Actually, I think we valued the last parcel on Friday. Now, we're just doing edit checks and going over everything, working with our software vendor and our printing company to get the test file over there to make sure everything's going to line up and print correctly on the, on the notification. And next meeting, I hope to bring you some, some maps and some stats to show you kind of where we started at in our 2017 values and where we ended up at and what kind of increase. Just want to point out to the board that, you know, a lot of people get caught up in the fact of, you know, wanting a percentage. And I can give you a percentage, I can give you a lot of different percentages. But the one percentage that you're going to have is the total percentage of what it went up. But what, what we've got to keep in mind is that's not going to be applicable to, to every property. You know, we've got some properties, some market areas, that they're not going to go up any. They're going to stay the same, they're going to stay flat. A lot of these small lots, for example, up at Hanger Rock Terrace, you know, we've had those valued at $2,000 for several revaluations. That's what, that's what they were. They haven't increased. We have some neighborhoods, especially in King and some of the subdivision, they see substantial increases, over 20%, you know? And we've seen all variations here and there. And we've got... Jake, Jake will take care of all the fields and Quaker Gap. But, you know, we, we've done this long enough, and Jake can attest to this. You know, we don't get caught up in a numbers game. We've had, this revaluation's been a good revaluation. It's been challenging, been a lot of time and effort put into it. But we, we've had over 2,200 qualified sales out of 31,000 parcels. So that's a good percentage. When you've got that good a percentage, you can hone in and get the, get the values where they're at, where the, where they need to be. And then we've also got a lot of listings, and we look at those listings and compare them to make sure that, that we're, we're on target. But I, I feel good about it. I know I'm glad that we're in the short roads now, because it's, it's been a, it's been a, been a task for sure. And I know we've got a big task in front of us, getting ready for the phone calls and the in-person visits and things like that. But just, just want to let this board know that we're going to work with everybody. If we got something wrong, we're going to fix it. And, you know, we're going to treat everybody like they need to be treated.
Well, since Quaker Gap went way up, I'm going to let Wayne go first on that.
Richard, again, appreciate the report. It was outstanding jobs always, you and your staff, and other conditions y'all been working in. I think y'all done a great job with this. I really do. I don't have any further.
You want to yell at him?
I ain't going to yell at him. He's been raising your taxes.
I know, they just built a brand new house beside of me, so mine probably went up. Because that, I couldn't believe what they were asking for the house beside of me.
I can't even tell you the truth. I think it was like $269 or $279.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm like, okay.
On the concrete, it's lit.
Yeah, exactly.
They'll probably get it.
Yeah. And so, yeah, that's better than the burned out restaurant across the street and the grown-up lot that used to be there. So that wasn't helping in the neighborhood any. But I had a question. Could you tell me the total collected again, that first total you said?
Yeah, it was $21.6 million, 97.1, 97.2, 97.2%.
I just didn't write it down as you were saying that. And did you say there had been approximately 22,000, like, properties sold or whatever?
2200.
2200? I thought 22,000.
And that's quite a lot.
That makes more sense. I know, right? I'm like, wait a minute.
750 of those happened in 2020. So, you know, they, a third of, a third of the sales happen in, you know, a fourth of the time.
That's quite a bit.
2020 was a big, big year.
That's not all of the actual sales that went out.
That's, that's the qualified. Yeah, that's not foreclosure, family transactions, thing like that. That's arms going transactions.
Thank you. I appreciate all y'all's hard work on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Man, how?
Just want to say thank you, Richard, as always. You've done a great job. And if it's a daunting task that you have been taking now in the next two or three months, will be a challenge. Just tell me, I'm on Flag Shells Running, Zen Inc., Incorporated, and the Quaker Gap.
SGX area there.
That's my headquarters.
Jake's still, I think Jake's still certified, so he's qualified to help, for sure.
No, thank you for everything you do. I appreciate it.
Richard, the only thing you need to know from us with the dates is good, is that correct?
The dates are good, and then I need to move those, the refunds and releases more than 100 down.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, we move on to item D, the COVID-19 sick time from employees' requests. That's Gail Tucker.
Yes. You probably can't understand me, so I brought Jamie. Because I've got, so if you have any questions?
I can start with that if you'd like. Go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead.
What we're doing right here is we are asking the board, you know, to extend a, a, a service that the federal government's gone through the COVID. A recently COVID, the HERS Act. They defined it 80 hours of...
Emergency sick leave.
Sick leave for folks. That stopped in December.
December 31st.
Okay, and now we're asking the board if they would like to be, to carry it to the, to June 30th. Or the cause of COVID is really worse now.
It's worse now than it was, yes.
Yes, and it's just an extension of the 80 hours.
Right, so with that, say it all, y'all take it all.
Yeah, so anyone that's used it.
Right, they wouldn't be green at another 80 hours. We kind of wanted to make it fair across the board, being that we've had more people out this past month, really, than we have in the months prior to COVID. And we didn't feel it was fair to let folks in, you know, last year, have 80 hours to use, and then folks that did it the next month have to use their own sicker vacation time due to being out on quarantine, because they either got COVID or they were exposed to somebody with COVID or their kids were being tested.
This is kind of strange or something at the time. I'm sure that if the employees in their individual department want to step up and give hours to those, please do. But this right here says that the board...
But this right here says that the Board of Commissioners are guaranteeing these folks 80 hours of sick leave and continuing the service that the COVID CARES Act. No, they can't help it, if they want to come around an old guy like me who's 66, and they know they're going home for 10 days and they don't have the time to do it, they can't, they have just so much time, Joe, you can give.
And what this helps, what this helps to do is helps keep COVID out of the office. Because a lot of times if people don't have the time to take, they're going to get quarantined for 10 days. Well, they're not going to come tell their employer they got tested and they've been quarantined, they're going to come on to work, possibly exposing 10 other people.
Julie, I want to say you're going to have a cram one day. You've got a hard goal, you know that.
She's got jewels now.
Now, I just have a question, is, do they, I guess you follow up, or they provide some proof of? Correct, they have to provide their note from either their doctor or the health department.
And honestly, if you test positive anywhere, they're going to call them home.
Right. Well, yeah, if they test positive, I figured that was pretty cut and dry. But if they're like exposure, so they're staying out, or a kid's exposure, I mean, I see that there could be loopholes where people could maybe not be as forthcoming with some things and could use it if they, I mean, I didn't know. Obviously, if they're positive, there would be, you know, proof of that, so I just-
You could have them give a letter if they would be quarantined, like, for instance, like my family was quarantined and they would have to get a letter from their employer or whatever to say that they had to be.
They were a contact of a positive. Okay, I just didn't know how that worked, thank you. That's the only question I had.
I mean, Ms. Cox, as long as there's documentation of it, and you know, the health department says, yes, this person did need quarantine, you know, to get paid, because I read an article this morning in the county. Where did I just take one department, where the EMS service in that county has got animals that sit in the hospital eight to 12 hours waiting on a load of patients, because it's so full of COVID. Guess what, that's a square box, got them two guys and their ladies exposed to for a long period of time.
That's true, I hadn't thought of that.
But no, I don't have a bit of problem with that. Like I said, when I started this, I've all been our county and our employees. If I, we got to look after them first.
Since this ran out decent, we're 30 persons, is something you need to move to action today?
If we could, yes.
I make a motion we move it to action.
I could.
I didn't make a move either, but.
What, then it's item E.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well now we move on to our action agenda. Item A to JCPC appointment request, at the last meeting, we, Rusty Slate was nominated to serve as a BACC appointee. Just time I'll open a floor for any further nominations.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, say aye. I now poll the board, starting with Commissioner Minn Hall.
Slate, Mr. Slate.
Commissioner Barney Castle.
Wayne. You wrote.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
All right, Commissioner appointments to the boards and committees. At the last meeting, it was decided that the Commissioner Cox would serve on the DSS board and the JCPC to replace former Commissioner Jimmy Walker on those boards, and that the Commissioner Barney Castle would serve on the YBID finance committee, which would replace former Commissioner Jimmy Walker and the YBID planning and evaluation committee, which is vacant from former Commissioner Jamie Young. The appointments have been advertised, I'll open a floor for any further nominations. One second.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, say aye. I now poll the board.
We can just make it simple, so you can say every single, you can say like list as presented is fine.
Commissioner Barney Castle? Has listed?
Yep.
Has listed.
Has listed. All right, item C, the opposed resolution adopting the Yadkin Valley Regional Bicycle Plan.
I make a motion we approve this resolution.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item D, the Wantacoo Planning Board ETJ member appointment request, at the December 14th meeting, Greg. How you say it? Say it again. LaRoche, okay. Was presented, nomination, currently request of Wantacoo Town Manager Kim Greenwood. Nomination has been advertised, but moved to the January 11th meeting, which was canceled. I'll open a floor for any further nominations.
And I'll make motion to close nominations.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye. I poll the board, starting with Commissioner Minn Hall.
LaRoche.
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 And item E, the COVID-19 sick time for employees' request, I have a motion on this.
I should approve the AR extension.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yes, June 30th, yeah.
I'll ask a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye. Make the adjournment. Good job.